Call to order. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and it's not to be considered a public community meeting. Public participation is governed by Board Bylaw 0169.1 dash the public participation at board meetings. With that in mind, Ms. Pedder?
Mr. Simons?
Present.
Mrs. Kessler?
Here.
Mrs. Wyder?
Here.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Here.
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Card, would you lead us in the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to have a motion for the approval or revision of agenda.
I move to approve or revise the agenda as discussed.
Second. Properly moved and seconded. Ms. Pedder?
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes. Motion passes. We move to our inspirational message, Mr. Card.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Princeton alum and principal of Princeton Innovation Center, Mr. Michael Anderson.
All right. Thank you.
You want to set the video up for us, sir?
Sure. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Michael Anderson, class of nineteen ninety-four. I like to say that.
Ninety-four.
May have gone to school in this building. We won't talk about that. So, it was very difficult, honestly, when I think about inspirational message, because there's so many great things happening at the Princeton Innovation Center. We're a hidden gem. It's phenomenal, the work that our students do on every single day. But I did, instead of me sitting here and telling you all about all the wonderful things that are going on at the IC, I thought it would be better to have our staff and our students talk about what inspires them.
Innovation Center is inspirational. For me, it's the work that I'm able to do with the students, seeing where they come and then taking it to the next step.
I think it's inspirational by the innovation center, it can help you graduate and like get some audio presence or like really school related things on the thing.
It's very inspiring because all of us come together as one, and if something ever happens to me, I know that I can go to somebody else and they'll help me and turn it into better.
Innovation Center is really inspiring because it's only an academic, it means that all the kids who have jobs can go and do their job, or act for their, but if kids have to care, they'll certainly do that. And because if we failed or didn't do that well in our class, and like the normal display where you can, you can come here and you can read a class and pass it and run to it even early for a long time and get a class.
Hola, muy buenos dias. Estoy aquí en la escuela de Innovation Center, y grabando un video el día de hoy para contarles un poco de la escuela. La escuela de Innovation Center es una muy buena escuela, la educación es muy buena, las profesoras son muy amables, muy educadas y enseñan mucha, ¿cómo se llama?, a educar a los alumnos a quien escuela, muy atentosos, como muy atentos a las profesoras, tal como profesores. Ayudan bastante a los estudiantes cuando los estudiantes necesitan algo, ellos ayudan. Siempre están dispuestos a ayudarle a los alumnos y sea... Todos los profesores aquí se llevan muy bien, todos son amigos y los ayudan mucho a aprender nuevas cosas con educación. Me agradecido por eso. Esta escuela es muy linda y quisiera que todos tuvieran una oportunidad de venir a esta escuela para que descubran las bellezas que tiene esta escuela. Muchas gracias.
It's so unique and it make me want to like just come to work every day. It's, you know, let me real quick, I mean, let me take you on a journey real quick. So, one of the cool things about this place is this. Good morning, good morning. I get to actually come in and sit down with teachers and just kind of watch them do their thing. Look at all our students are amazing. Hey, say hi. I mean, you get to come to work and look at a bit of action, right? Right? And we get to help. Sayes, good morning, Sayes. Good morning. Oh, my gosh. So, these are the reasons why I love coming to the Innovation Center, for reasons like that. You get to see the smiles on the students' face. Come on with me again, come on in. I'm a dreamer. Good morning. This is why the Innovation Center is so great. What's up? What's up? What's up? So, I mean, just seeing the students at their best, doing their best, giving it their all, put more foot forward despite all the hurdles and challenges that they may face. They come here and they get innovated. And the staff here, we all pour in, and the young people pour in back to us. That's what makes it awesome.
I know that was in the school, all right? But when you think about the inspiration for our kids, it happens every single day with these wonderful people. Every single day, no matter what our kids have been through, they come in, whether they're happy, sad, or whatever, this is their inspiration. This is what gets them going every single day. So, I want you to remember that, that when you come to the IC, there's nothing but greatness. Every single day, every single day. Now, as we finish, we always say the same thing. Have a wonderful day, and remember, we care for you, we support you, and you earn...
The life!
Time to protect your planet.
So, thank you all for giving me an opportunity to come up here. I'm going to tell you something. You already know, when it comes to Princeton, you already know what greatness is about. You already know, because I see it all over this room. So, I'm a very proud principal. I hope you all understand, the Innovation Center is somewhere special. It's something special. We have special students that do amazing things. So, thank you all.
I will say, just real quick, I've known Mr. Anderson for a lot of years. When I was a teacher and a coach and assistant principal here at Princeton, at the high school and middle school in Lincoln Heights, I've watched him, and then we worked in another district together as well, and it's always been about the kids. And that's the kind of people we want here. People are about the kids and making, no matter what the kids are going through, trying to find a way to help them be successful. So, I appreciate you. Keep it up, my man.
Okay, we will move into our recognition phase. Mr. Card?
We have a lot of recognitions tonight, which is a good thing. It means we're doing a lot of wonderful things around here. The first one is a proclamation, month of the military child, April twenty twenty-five. So, bear with me, it's a pretty long one here. Whereas Defense Secretary Casper Weinberger was responsible for establishing April as the month of the military child in nineteen eighty-six, and the Department of Defense was honored his initiative ever since. And whereas the month of April is an important one for children who have one or both parents serving in uniform, since nineteen eighty-six, there have been an increasing number of awareness campaigns aimed at recognizing the needs of military children in all areas for coping with the deployment of parents to war zones, to education of military dependence in schools around the globe. And whereas approximately two million military children have experienced a parental deployment since nine eleven. And whereas nearly eighty percent of military children attend public schools throughout the United States, and whereas the children of our service members continue to make a significant contribution to schools, communities, and the nation despite prolonged and repeated abscesses from one or both parents. And whereas month of the military child reaffirms our commitment to ensuring excellence in schools and youth services to military children who face unique challenges that other children their age may never experience. Whereas month of the military child is a time to honor the sacrifices made by military families worldwide with an emphasis on the experience of the dependent children of military members serving at home and overseas. And whereas Air Force Blue, Army Green, Navy Blue, Marine Red, Coast Guard Blue, all are thought to combine together as a single color purple. Purple indicates that all branches of the military are supported. And whereas Princeton High School, Princeton Community Middle School, Evendale Elementary, Glendale Elementary, Heritage Elementary, Springdale Elementary, Stewart Elementary, and Woodlawn Elementary Schools have been awarded the honor of Purple Star Schools by the Higher Department of Education. Now for, be it resolved, the Princeton City School District, Board of Education, join the Department of Defense, and school districts and communities around the world in declaring the month of April twenty twenty-five a month of the military child in the Princeton City School District. Thank you. Next one is a recognition of Chef's Cafe donation. I'm not sure if they're here this evening, but I still want to honor them. Paul and Laura Miranda celebrated their third anniversary as the new owners of Chef's Cafe in Sharonville on March fourth, calling it March fourth, F-O-R-T-H. This is celebratory day of Chef's Cafe celebrating marching forth with passion, perseverance, and relentless pursuit for our dreams. A portion of the profits on this day were to be donated to Stewart Elementary to be put towards the negative unpaid lunch balances for the school year. We are thrilled to report that for twenty twenty-five, Stewart will receive a donation in the amount of one thousand and forty-four dollars and sixty-six cents for unpaid lunch balances. Four and fifty-four was raised solely by our generous guests that dined with us on March fourth. Chef's Cafe matched the amount, plus some team members' tips, for a total of a thousand forty-four sixty-six. So, we want to say thank you. I don't think they're here, are they? But however, if you've ever been to Chef's Cafe, a really good chicken salad and nice sandwiches, so if you ever have a chance, go support them because they support us. So, thank you.
Before we go on, can you tell us the location?
Yes, it is on, I don't know the exact address, but you go right down Field Zertle, and it's right there in the plaza. I don't know what the address is, I can get that out, but if you go down Field Zertle, all the way down to that stoplight, McCauley, go up about another hundred, two hundred yards, and on the left, there's a gas station, and it's right in that plaza, right there, Chef's Cafe, close to my house, so I go there from time to time. And me and Mr. Frickie like to go lunch there sometimes with Mr. Frickie and support them because they support us. And last year, I think it was three or four hundred dollars they raised, I don't remember exactly what it was, they almost tripled it this year, so that is awesome that we got the word out. When we went there, there was nowhere to sit. We went to lunch, tried to support it, and there was nowhere to sit, which was an awesome thing. So, people came out for good food and to support our kids at Stewart Elementary.
Thank you.
All right. Next one is a recognition of boys varsity basketball coach, Brian Wyatt. The Board wishes to recognize boys varsity basketball coach, Brian Wyatt. Coach Wyatt was named the two thousand twenty-five Division One All District Sixteen Coach of the Year...
All right.
...by the Ohio High School Basketball Coach Association. In addition, Coach Wyatt was also named the Greater Miami Conference GMC Coach of the Year, as we were GMC champs. Cincinnati District Sixteen is composed of schools in Hamilton and Claremont Counties. So, Coach Wyatt, if you'd come up?
Let's go.
I will move in after you guys. I don't have a good chair. Oh, gosh. I'm a woman here, so I'm a little...
Stay close, stay down there. We've got a few more, I just got to get up and breathe. Yeah, move off the side, yeah. Next, we will recognize Princeton Community Middle School eighth grade football team. The Board would like to recognize members of the Princeton Community Middle School two thousand and twenty-four eighth grade football team. Team competed in the GMC Greater Miami Conference, and they finished the season undefeated at eight and oh. Their team is coached by head coach Donnie White, assistants Ruben Feliciano, Dirk Thomas, Coach Tom Cassidy, Gerald Bailey, and Jaden Simkins. So, they would all come up? Players here? Come on, let's go.
There are eighth graders, aren't there?
All right, next, we will have recognition of the Princeton Community Middle School eighth grade boys basketball team. The Board would like to recognize members of the Princeton Community Middle School two thousand twenty-four eighth grade boys basketball team. The team competed in the GMC and finished the regular season with a ten and one record. The team went on to win the GMC basketball tournament and be crowned GMC champions. The team is coached by Coach Drew Crowley. Come on up. One more. Next, proclamation of Princeton High School twelfth grader student Wesley Anglin Eagle Scout. The Board wishes to recognize Wesley Anglin, twelfth grade Princeton High School, for completing his Eagle Scout project and achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Wesley is a member of Scout Troop five ninety-eight, led by Steve Lowmueller. Wesley was inspired by Princeton music teacher, Miss Kristen Brown, to build tuba racks to be used in the band room at Princeton High School. He built two tuba racks that will hold four tubas each. They are painted in Princeton scarlet red with Princeton gray carpeting. Wesley was assisted by members of the Scout Troop five ninety-eight and Scout Troop fifteen ninety-eight, and many family members and friends. The Viking heads on the racks were painted by Board Member, Miss Jody Kessler. The entire project was completed on January fourth, twenty twenty-five. Eagle Scout is the highest achievement or rank attainable in the scouting America. It is a lifelong achievement that demonstrates the Scouts' leadership, community service, and character development. Since its inception in nineteen eleven, only four percent of Scouts have earned this rank after a lengthy review process. Wesley, come on up. And I think he may have a lead part in a musical coming up, which I'll talk about later. Okay. I know you all have homework, so you're welcome to go on. Unless you want to stay and listen to the talk.
Are you a Cub Scout? Boy Scout too?
I can go with those. Start being a fairer guy. Tell my city twice. Yeah, I didn't want you to camp on someone else's. You're not camping on anyone. We're in the backyard.
I don't have, no papers for me.
We will now continue the business meeting, moving to item number four, the consent agenda. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Pedder?
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Number five, district business. A motion to approve the financial report for March?
I move to approve the March twenty twenty-five financial report as presented.
Second. Properly moved and seconded. Ms. Pedder?
Your documents are attached in Board Docs, and I'll just quickly touch on the monthly financial report, comparing forecasts to where we stand after the end of March. Numbers are as projected, moving quite along. Differences are timing differences. April's the big month where we get our final settlements typically from all three counties for our property tax. So, we are peaking in the revenue area after April, when all those monies come in, and then, of course, we don't have a lot of other big revenue sources. We do get our state funding and everything, but just everything is moving very well according to the forecast. We will update that forecast in May, and as we did in February this year also. I think the only thing I want to just remind everybody of, we have this little outstanding amount, or not outstanding amount, it's just a difference in the forecast, and it was that refund from Hamilton County. So, we look like we have more revenue than the forecast, but that was, you know, a surprise gift that we all received, that refund from the county auditor fees, treasurer auditor fees, which they do, I think, every six or seven years. Okay? You have your oh eighteen fund, the corporate donation fund that we have, still plenty of unencumbered balance in there, eighty-one thousand, are definitely in deficit spending in that account right now, as we are spending more than we are receiving in donations at this time. And you have your credit card report, and we'll wrap that report up in June with the total amount of rebate we receive each year for that. It's not a great amount, but it's nice to have, and right now, we're putting that in the corporate contribution fund for spending there. And then you have the reconciliation with the investment reports from each of the entities attached here also. And that is your March financial report, three quarters down, one quarter to go.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
The corporate contributions. Some school districts will list the corporate contributions because of the corporation giving the contributions. So, that's okay, I can do that.
We accept those as donations.
But do we list them on our website, or do we list them anywhere? Because if one corporation gives, and they are publicly recognized, like we recognize someone tonight, or if we put it on the website, it might encourage others to do the same.
I believe they're on the website, I believe they were in the Viking report, I believe they're on scoreboards, and so I think they're acknowledged several different ways.
But they're easy to find on the website, probably.
Bye.
Thank you.
And the credit card rewards?
Mm-hmm.
What is that percent? I mean, it's no breakdown in terms of how much was spent in order to get the amount?
Yeah.
Is there a percent, like ten percent?
It's not nearly that much. I'm going to, I'll give that for you, but it's definitely less than ten percent.
I figured it is, based on the number, but just curious.
And more and more vendors have, don't like receiving that, or sometimes they will charge us a percentage if we use the credit card. We had a few vendors that we could use that had a larger dollar amount, but now they would prefer to have us pay them in another means versus credit card. They're really trying to push us towards electronic payments.
Right.
And we're still a little bit nervous about some of that, and the fraud can be kind of risky there. We continually watch that because our state software doesn't really handle electronic payments easily yet either, so...
Okay.
There's a few more steps. You would think it would be easier, but there are a few more steps to do an electronic payment versus a paper check.
Interesting.
State software.
Any other questions? Ms. Pedder?
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Motion passes. Need a motion for the amended appropriation resolution?
On behalf of the Treasurer, I move to approve the amended appropriation resolution and amend the certificate of estimated resources.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded.
Yes, I am back again with this. Surprise, surprise, we've received another safety grant. So, of course, you must approve receipt of new funds. It goes into different fund number that we didn't have at that time, so we get the safety grant, and those are itemized on there. We also had some changes in some of our federal grants, most were increases, so we took this time since we were bringing another change to you to go over those one more time. But again, the Board must approve all revenue receipts by fund at certain levels and spending of that, so I bring it back to you again.
Any questions? And Ms. Pedder?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item six, discussion, policy update.
What we have here is just a first read of a few policies, student supervision wellness for administration, professional classified in our wellness, not a whole lot of changes, a lot of wordsmithing there, so if you look at those, I think you'll notice not a lot going on there, but just a few changes in wording when we talked to Neola and made those adjustments.
I'm just curious on, what time is this? On the P.O. sixteen thirteen, and they have crossed out board and they put in board? I mean, I know it's wordsmithing, but am I missing something there? Letter D.
Yeah, I see, that's a great question. I'll ask that question. I did see that, but I didn't know what the purpose of that was.
I'm just wondering if I missed something there, or should it have been a different word, I guess is what I'm questioning.
Let me...
Yeah, just making sure that that's what was meant. And then they did it again. I know I saw it someplace else, too.
don't like receiving that or sometimes they will charge us a percentage if we use the credit card. We had a few vendors that we could use that had a larger dollar amount, but now they would prefer to have us pay them in another means versus credit card. You know, really trying to push us towards electronic payments.
Right.
And we're still a little bit nervous about some of that. And the fraud can be kind of risky there. We continually watch that because our state software doesn't really handle electronic payments easily yet either, so.
Okay.
There's a few more steps. You would think it would be easier, but there are a few more steps to do an electronic payment versus a paper check.
Hmm, interesting.
State software. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Pedder?
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Motion passes. Need a motion for the amended appropriation resolution.
On behalf of the treasurer, I move to approve the amended appropriation resolution and amend the certificate of estimated resources.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded.
Yes, I am back again with this. Surprise, surprise, we've received another safety grant. So, of course, you must approve receipt of new funds. It goes into different fund number that we didn't have at that time. So we get the safety grant and those are itemized on there. We also had some changes in some of our federal grants. Most were increases, so we took this time since we were bringing another change to you to go over those one more time. But again, the board must approve all revenue receipts by fund at certain levels and spending of that, so. I bring it back to you again.
Any questions? And Mrs. Pedder?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item six, discussion, policy update.
What we have here is just the first read of a few policies. Student supervision wellness for administration, professional classified in our wellness. Not a whole lot of changes, a lot of wordsmithing there. So if you look at those, I think you'll notice not, not a lot going on there, but just a few changes in wording when we talked to Neola and made those adjustments.
I'm just curious on, what time is this? On the P O sixteen thirteen and they have crossed out board and they put in board? I mean, I know it's wordsmithing, but am I missing something there? Letter D.
Yeah, I see. That's a great question. I'll ask that question.
I, I saw.
I did see that, but I didn't know what the, what the purpose of that was.
Wondering if I missed something there or should it have been a different word, I guess is what I'm questioning.
Let me, uh.
Yeah, just making sure that that's, that's what was meant. And then they did it again. I know I saw it someplace else too. A different word. Oh, it's the same document. An H, principal, principal.
B and H. I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for this period? Okay. Let's go to six B, academic update.
Yes, we are CIA team, so Ms. Hill will come up, Ms. Stiles, I believe Ms. Perrin. And then I think Ms. Roddy, communications director, may have something to say there as well. And that gave you a copy, everybody has a copy or a copy on the table. I got, you need another copy here?
Okay, I'm just going to share a little bit about our third grade guarantee, reading summer school program that we're going to run for our students. The program dates are May twenty-eighth till June thirteenth. We're going to run from nine to twelve. We will have this at Heritage Hill Elementary School. Breakfast will be served. It will be a hot breakfast, which I did speak to Mrs. Sparks, so we're excited about that. Lunch is also served and it will be a hot lunch as well. Transportation will be provided. Our curriculum is we're going to continue our learning standards for our third grade students that are provided by the state to enable them to continue on their personalized learning paths. Our focus, again, we're going to look at our foundational skills. We're going to look at reading literature, informational texts, vocabulary and all kinds of comprehension strategies. We will continue to use the curriculum that we have in place to enhance the remediation for our students. And our overall goal again is to hopefully all of our students will be on track by the end of third grade. Do we have any questions at this time?
The curriculum that we're going to use, is this the same that we used this year or are we transitioning to the new curriculum?
We're going to continue to use the same standards, but we're going to share that information in different ways. It's not going to be a repeat of the same curriculum. It will be presented to the students in different ways, a continuum of like their phonics curriculum and looking at the skills that they have deficits in such as reading fluency, practicing reading and all of those early literacy skills to help them read on grade level.
Okay. Questions? All right, thank you.
Good evening. So just like Ms. Hill said, we are also doing our E L summer school hosted at Heritage Hill as well. On May twenty-eighth to June thirteenth, the students will be there from nine to twelve. And again, we'll have breakfast and lunch provided for all the students as, as well as transportation. This really is a focus for our newcomer E L students that have very limited English proficiency levels. So the goal is to be a fun, engaging activity, activities for them to practice learning English. So when they come back in the fall, they've got some more proficiency in the English language to help promote their education coming in the fall. So that's what we're doing. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Good evening. We will again be running our summer STEM bridge camp for our incoming sixth graders. We did, as a cost savings measure, shorten it from three weeks to two weeks and after meeting with Mandy Hoffman, who builds out the program and does a lot of the activity development and the grade level administrators. That third week was often very low attendance anyway, so to shorten it to two, they thought that we would get a bigger bang for our buck and still get the volume of students that we've had in the years past, which ranges anywhere from about a hundred and fifty to two hundred students. So we'll continue to push that out. All of the elementary principals have been pushing it out through their newsletters and their updates. And all fifth grade teachers have enough brochures to be able to hand to the students to take home so that their families can sign them up. We will have our STEM-related activities infused within the two weeks. We do also partner with a local church to do sports activities so that the kids can be active and work on those team building skills and get to know each other a little bit more. We do, we do love having the middle school one oh one. We know that it's a big transition to go from elementary to middle school. So talking about time management and organizational skills and how study skills will look different, knowing that they will have seven teachers throughout the course of their day versus the same teacher or just a few teachers throughout that day. As well as email communication, because we want them to be able to interact with their teachers when they have needs and start to advocate for themselves. So we start that early. And then as well as our e-hall pass system, which is the electronic hall pass when students need to go to the restroom or see the nurse or see an administrator along those lines. We do also, new from last year and is continuing again this year, we do have a social emotional learning and team building activities that our Talbot House counselors put on, so we are excited to be able to bring them back. And we will also have support for our English learners and our special needs students for any, any support that they might have as well as a nurse. And as always, lunch and breakfast will be provided and transportation. Questions about our middle school camp?
Some schools have, instead of STEAM, STEM, they have STEAM and they add the arts element. Is that something?
So I'm glad that you brought that up. It is, we are looking into, I have not been able to confirm it yet. However, Brent Billingsley, who I don't know if you noticed any of the pictures that were behind the scenes in Mr. Anderson's video, but he is a well-known artist that comes in and also has social work background. And so I have reached out to his company to see if they can also come in and do that same mural work because as the students come in, it's incredible. He will draw out the mural and draws it out in pencil, but then it's almost like a paint by number. And so kids can come in and get the brush and they will know which color. And then as it all comes together, you see that it's a picture of the students. So it'll be a picture of some of our incoming sixth graders. And what I'd like to do, if he's got the capability, but he is very, very busy, is to be able to put that up on the wall in the sixth grade hallway because we have our wings. And then when sixth graders move to seventh grade, the mural will, will move with them. And then the incoming sixth graders will get their own mural. And then when the seventh graders move to eighth grade, the murals will just travel with them throughout middle school. So I'm hoping that he's available so that we, I know that we've got funds in our Title IV account to be able to do this, a similar thing that the Innovation Center did, but we haven't confirmed it yet. So that's the only reason why it's not on the bulleted, on the bulleted list. But if we can get him with his social work background, the conversations that he has with the students and we would just kind of cycle them in through the different rotations and the different groups so everyone would get a chance to experience it. But the conversations that he has with the students to help them learn more about conflict resolution and problem solving and how to handle your emotions, especially as you get older when things are changing. And we know that middle school is quite a challenging few years with the hormones and everything like that. So how he infuses that is, Mr. Anderson said, was just incredible. He said the students, they had to finish their work before they were able to go and do those activities. And he said their work output, output to be able to go and do that just was very, very therapeutic and very fulfilling. So we're hoping that we can bring that to our program as well. If not this year, then next year.
That emotional intelligence is so important.
Yes, yes. And it's, it is challenging for our teenagers because they're going through a lot of growth and development and to, to rein that in and to kind of coach that along, oftentimes from an outsider can be very impactful for, for our students. So we're hoping that we can make that work. Other questions? All right, then we have high school. High school, we will be doing our summer school program for credit recovery this year as well as offering health. We know that that helps a lot of our incoming freshmen to get that health course taken care of as well as any students that might have fallen credit deficient and were not able to get the health course in their freshman or sophomore year. So we will be providing that. We will also have support for our English learners and our special education students. And breakfast and lunch will be provided along with the transportation. Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am super excited to announce that the Princeton Mobile Book Center will be driving literacy home this summer. We will be attending literacy nights, field days and lots of events in the community, including parades and our touch of trucks. We will have twelve dedicated stops in June from Monday to, through Thursday. And we will also be adding a workforce outreach component this year so that families that are looking for job assistance, looking to make connections with our community partners and business partners and work with our workforce department can have the opportunity to get some information and get their paperwork filled out as well as our final forms paperwork for the upcoming school year. I am happy to say that we have given out over half a million books through the Princeton Mobile Book Center. So we are very excited to be able to add that literacy component into our neighborhoods, into our children's own personal libraries and allow them to have books and educational materials at their fingertips. Any questions? Thank you.
Sounds great. I'd like to get on that bus.
Just curious, just overall, about how many students do we expect to attend this summer?
The bridge, the middle school?
Any of it, yeah.
Middle school's around usually a hundred fifty-two hundred. Hopefully more, I know I was going to say this, in our listening sessions and I'm out in the community and talking to different folks, a lot of parents from elementary, the kids went to the summer bridge and now in the middle school, said it was huge for them. Because what they did, they feel like they know the building. They feel more comfortable because coming from Evendale or Lincoln Heights or wherever to that big building can be intimidating. Those, what I've heard from the administration and teachers and others and parents, those that come to the summer bridge seem to fit better because they, they come in and they, oh yeah, I know where this room, I know where this is, I know where that is. They can find a gym, they can find a cafeteria, they can find classrooms. So hopefully, many of our parents, this is getting elementary, putting in their newsletters, it's been out, will have their kids coming. And I will say, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I'm okay. You don't have to be there every day. I mean, we want you there every day, but you don't have to be. Because a lot of parents are like, well, I can't make it every day. Come three days. It's still better than nothing. And you'll get to know the building and those things. So just come out. I think it's, it's not traditional summer school. There's a lot of fun activities they do. I go, I went over there last summer a few different times and, and did some things with them and had some fun. And a good way to meet some new, see, meet the kids as well. So it's pretty, it's pretty, it's, it's been really a good thing for our students that have been a part. So hopefully we can get even more than we've had in the past.
I'd say how many can we take in? I mean, you said about a couple hundred, how many?
I don't know. We're not going to turn you by way, I don't think.
No. We, we gotta cut it away. Current, current staffing supports around two hundred. But if we have that increase, then we'll work to make sure that there's enough staff available.
Okay, I just want parents not to think that they.
Oh, no, we do not, we do not close anyone out.
I'll go over help if I have to.
We are, we welcome and we will get all the necessary contact information that we need so that they can, they can be again.
I'm going to invite the board members come help me if we get to me, kid.
I'll be there. I'll be there.
Do it.
Just tell me the day and time, I'll be there. Is that the same with the other programs too? I mean, we'll take as many kids as we, that want to do it? How does that work? Elementary?
For third grade being guaranteed for students who do not pass for third grade reading assessment. So the students are currently in the process of taking their third grade O S T. We'll have another opportunity to have another score and assess before we determine which students will attend the school. So this is really a focus on our third grade student capability with the standards that are needed for them to become a professional teacher.
And on average, about how many students?
Um, I'd say like maybe one hundred and fifty or so, but maybe less than that. Once they all pass, you know, in the way. So, um, you know, we're excited about that and get a pretty good attendance and students attending. Um, we will have our own teachers working with them throughout the summer.
Okay.
And then for the E L piece, we are incoming first through fifth grade students. We've asked each building to prioritize for the top five in the cover. So it's about twenty-five students per grade O, about a hundred and five students in the line.
Okay, that's just important for people to know that this is how many students we're serving throughout the summer because it's good programming. Yes, thank you.
And we're using our vet agreements to do that.
Well, yeah, thank you for that. That's important to note.
But are, do you send letters home or how do you encourage people to come to the fifth grade or third grade program?
We have an applicant, well, there's no home, we have an application too. The cool thing for the third grade in the year is we need students to send applications home to the students that do not have them. And then for E L, they think we send those home to the families that qualify, so for the newcomer students.
Yeah. And do we offer anything, and you may do it already online, I just don't know. But for a high school student that needs to brush up on algebra and geometry, do you have anything like that that they can use during the summer? It may not be an organized program, but it might be something online. Princeton used to sort of do a summer algebra, geometry thing, but you know, that's probably outdated.
There, the students still have their Alex program that they can continue to work on their path throughout the summer. But there's, it would be progressing through whichever course they were in. And then once they get loaded into the new course for next year, so if they were in algebra, they can continue to work on that. But then once the year rolls over and they roll into geometry, then they would be in the geometry course.
Okay.
They would be able to stay in there and work on that. That's always been an opportunity and has not been utilized very much in years past. But that, that is an option for, for.
I, I remember my son, he has a bachelor's in engineering, but he was very impressed during one particular summer that he was able to come and work with a, a teacher, you know, on questions he had about geometry and things like that. But I guess our kids can still do that during the school year because even kids in other school districts, parochial, private and other school districts would sign up or try to sign up for the program at Princeton. But I see what you're saying. It's, it's not a matter of bringing people in, they just do it on their own. That's a better way, I guess. Thank you.
What is that program that's available if they have questions? Students? What's that software?
What, did she just mention?
No, I mean, if they have questions about how to get something done, it helps them on homework.
The homework hotline? Don't we have that anymore?
Yeah.
Are, are you talking about the one that we had contracted that ends this year?
Yes, what was the name of that?
Hey, what?
Oh, yeah.
I was going to say.
About Sunday we have.
Was that, was that available in the summer too?
It, you have to roster the students. And so we have rostered students in the past, but again, just unfortunately, it's a great resource, but we just couldn't take advantage of it.
So that might have been something.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Treasurers' report.
Uh, we are just winding up the, the school year and physical year in the treasurer's office. Our deadlines have begun and we've even passed some of them. So just again, wrapping up, final requisitioning, final purchase orders, final bill payments, budgeting for next year. So we're, we're on that downhill slide right now to June thirty for us. But you know, it's a busy but exciting time, closing everything out. You want me to just roll right into this?
Moving on to the landslide.
So while we're having fun in the treasurer's office closing out the year, we're not having so much fun, the district with the house version of the biannual budget. So you know, the governor's version wasn't exactly what we were hoping for. But the house version is, is definitely an issue for most public school districts around the state. So I had two webinars today. Our forecasting company is putting together things that we can show change and impact. And they're still working on this. I mean, it's still really new and they're just trying to get all this information into the software so we can talk about it. And the first one, we focused on what it means that they are not moving forward with phase in of the years five and six of the funding formula. And also no, no base cost increase. And you know, those are our two primary goals. A district like Princeton and we're, we're a formula-driven district. We were underfunded for decades, you know, capped. Remember that term we use capped? All the formulas projected, we should receive a lot more money, but it was always capped at a certain level of increase based on what the state believed they could afford. So this funding formula, of course, was wonderful for Princeton, a district that had been capped for decades. We were seeing growth every year for four years. We forecasted in November to continue seeing growth in years five and six. And now neither the governor or the house version kept the phase in or the base cost increase. So the house has come out and they've kind of created another funding formula. And it's practically reverting back to some of the ways of old. practically reverting back to some of the ways of old. Someone was current, commit, comparing it to the former bridge formula, where basically they said, oh, we'll give you X number of dollars more per student each year. So, the House has that in their formula, and next year, they are giving districts twenty dollars per student more and thirty dollars the following year. And setting the new guaran-
I found this on the web.
Oops. Setting the new guarantee amount as the fiscal year twenty-five amount you receive. Now, for Princeton, of course, we've seen growth every, all four years, so our amount is higher than it was as a capped district. But, we were counting on that, two more years of growth, and that was going to be fair to Princeton finally. Of course, of course, there, you know, no formula's perfect. There were little tweaks, of course, we would love to make in that formula, but certainly, full phase in of that formula would have meant that Ohio had a funding formula that had calculations in it that made sense, and that students would be funded according to what they brought to the table, you know? You receive special funding for weights for students that were English language learners. You receive special funding for special ed and economically disadvantaged children. And we know all those categories take more money to give that same amount of education. So, it is, the Treasurers' had, and business officials had the conference last week, I have to say, it was not as much, not much happiness up there trying to adjust to what it's, the impact is in public education. And, you know, they're, they're funding, they're funding the voucher program again, the increase in the voucher program isn't, is a lot more than we're seeing. You have to remember that public school children take, are ninety percent of students in Ohio, and we're not seeing that type of funding being driven towards those students. So, basically, if we were stuck with the House version in this context, we don't have a formula anymore, we're back to an arbitrary amount that they're gonna decide every biennial about how much we're gonna get or not get, and it's probably gonna be based on whatever they have left over, back to what we call residual budgeting. I've got this much left, we'll just divide it by the number of kids in the state and that's how much you'll get. And it's just a real blow. I can't even imagine being on that committee that spent years, years putting this formula together and working with everyone in the school districts and, and trying to figure out what it took to educate a child in Ohio. Just a devastating blow. But, don't worry, there's one more hit coming. So, they added language in that also prevents you from carrying over cash in excess of thirty percent of your expenditure. So, it's kind of interesting because I'm like, we're on the ballot, you know? We're on the ballot, you know? And this year, we would have had thirty-seven and a half percent versus the thirty percent. So, then what they do is you have to go to the poor county auditors, they're the ones that have to put this off. They are going to cut your tax revenue in order to get you to thirty percent. So, I will have more of this later. The forecasting company is still working on the spreadsheet, but they are in essence going to be able to show how many mills you'll have to return in order to get under the thirty percent. So, the fun chart, it's not official yet, but we are on the ballot. So, this year's thirty-seven, next year, we were, we're almost at thirty. It's a tiny fraction of a mill they would take from us. But, you know, we're a levy district, so we are going to pass a levy and we're gonna have more than thirty percent. You know, you have, you're planning so you don't have to run a levy every year or two. So, you're planning a levy to last three, four, five years, so you're not on the ballot all the time. That's a lot of time, energy and work and pain for taxpayers to, to do this. So, if they're going to, Reading, our friends at Reading just passed a nice levy to get them five years down the road. So, they have a lot of cash right now. So, in essence, they're going to reduce their millage so they stay at this thirty percent. I said, how do, how do you explain that to your taxpayer, right? Because then the next year, what if you come back and you're at twenty-eight percent? So, then they're gonna increase the millage, if it's been voted, it's been voted, eh, to get back up to the thirty percent. You all know who's gonna get blamed by the taxpayers for that, right? So, I mean, how do you tell people that it's a constant roller coaster about what you're gonna owe on your tax bill? Just...
I think you tell them now.
I mean, I said, I spoke up in the meeting because I put my chart up there on the screen because I wanted people to see it. I said, we are on the ballot in May. Okay, so we have a little bit of money over the thirty percent now. At the end of this fiscal year, we will not last, at the end of, last fiscal year, we did, at the end of this one, we won't. I said, so, if we pass the levy, then the next time we report, we'll be over thirty percent. So, they'll fix it so it's not. Right? And they're gonna fix it at the county auditor level. I said, I don't know how you explain to your community that you, you, we're on the ballot in November, you didn't pass, you made cuts, it's been very hard to make these cuts, you pass the levy so you have a, a moment of joy, and then the next cycle they're going to take what the board has approved and the taxpayers have voted for? What have we just lost? We've just lost local control.
I think that's the key, is that it's taking away the will of the voter. Because if the will of the voter was to allow, to pass anybody's levy, then that's the will of the voter. It should not be up to anyone to come in and then reverse that because they think you shouldn't have those funds. I mean, again, it, it is another way to erode at public education.
We look different than most of our neighbors.
We do.
There are districts that have hardcoded levy cycles that they've passed year after year, decade after decade, and they know that they have that, that, uh, that high cash balance for a period of time, and then you have a low cash balance until you pass a levy because levies are passed for an amount. Expenses increase with inflation. So, it just makes sense that eventually your expenses catch up with your revenue that you raised from the last levy, because levies are flat, except for new construction.
Well, part of the story that's being told is that public schools are sitting on billions of dollars, which we all know is not true. I mean, we are not sitting on money, but that is what's being told and the re, the rationale as to why to do this. We have to be more vocal about what it really looks like in terms of how we raise money, how we spend money, and even how we're saving, you know, all, we need to tell our own story. Because, again, I don't think the story that's being told is accurate.
So...
Do we know the percentage? You said ninety percent of, of students in Ohio go to public school? But what percentage is that of the total population? For instance, in the Princeton district, we only have, what, twenty-five to thirty percent of households sending kids to Princeton because of the age of the residents, et cetera? So, what is that for Ohio? And is that what is really steering all of this? Where there's a lack of investment in public schools? If so, we're starting to look like Florida. Nobody goes to Florida for their high, public high schools. I mean, unless you can run a four-one-forty. But that's what happens in Florida, no? People move there and they, and they don't vote for taxes to support the public schools. And, and as we age in Ohio, is that part of what we're fighting? If so, it's very short sighted.
I, I think Ms. Chris mentioned, Ms. Perry mentioned, you know, public education's under attack a little bit, and I think this is just another way. It's sad for all of us that are public educators and went to public edu, went to public schools and things of that nature, but we keep having the conversations with our legislators and I know I do with Bassett, she does with her group, and, and continue to have those conversations. Not sure if anybody's listening, but we got to keep having them. Because there are a couple, there are a couple folks that have listened when I've talked to them, like, we get it, and have voted, it may be a little different, just not enough.
So, legislators are home right now, two weeks. So, any, any emails or phone calls or anything people want to do to reach out, to help them understand? I'm not even sure, you know, sometimes, sometimes things are passed that can't actually be put into practice. So, there are a group of people that are wondering if, if this cash balance percentage watch is actually legal, because, again, you are, taxpayers have voted to levy a tax. Can someone, can that be legally taken away? Right? So, they're looking at that. And the other thing is the, the workload on the county auditor. The workload on the county auditor, I don't know how, um, we've been told, OASBO was talking about the county auditors, just did not think they were for anything like this. I can't imagine, you know, they already have their playoffs and Super Bowl, every time they do a triennial update and a reappraisal. Those are intensive times for workload for them, throwing this in, and this would happen every year. I mean, in August is the timeframe, I guess they sit down and, and look at this and just, is it, is it even doable at a county? And when you think of a county like Hamilton County, how many schools? We have a lot of school districts in Hamilton County. It's, it's, it's different, you know? So, we have some very small, a lot of very small districts as well as CPS. So, that's a lot of workload on that county auditor's office. So, just something we need to talk about again. It, I mean, our, our will is, of course, full funding of this formula, full phase in, increased base costs. And then we have a formula. We still have to fight every biennial to get those base costs increased. I wish we could get that in law. Don't worry, what is in law is the state share, because remember, the state share numbers, they're, they're base costs, which is valuation and income level. So, those are updated every biennial in law. So, valuations are increasing, that makes, and incomes are increasing, which makes districts look richer, and the richer you are, the more you can pay to support your school district, and the state share reduces. So, we're, we're also having this switch from state funding percentage shifting to local funding, so...
So, it sounds like the onus is on...
I'm just Susie Sentine tonight.
Without being so deep in despair, it appears the onus is on us to articulate and help people understand that public education is here to stay, and that there are things we need to do to make sure it is. Like, we need to make a statement against Ed Choice. We need to make statements against a lot of things, including the fact that in some communities in Ohio, it's almost as if the private sector business community is running the school district instead of educators, which is appalling to me. So, I think we have some homework to do statewide. I mean, it, it, it's time out for that, that court decision, it was Perry County versus the state of Ohio, many, many years ago, which showed that the funding for schools would come from people's taxes. And so, we may even need to look at other venues and ways of raising money, but I still believe and will always believe that a public school education is one of the last vestiges of equality and opportunity for many kids in this country.
So, we have two weeks to talk to legislators. I, they were going to update this one chart that shows this cash balance issue. We are the poster child of levy cycle and planning, you know, here's what we were plan, here, you know, our plan obviously would look very different. Our May plan that we put in place would look very different under this legislation. We would, we would pass for the twelve point eight million, but whatever portion of that was over the thirty percent, we would not receive.
It's confusing.
Even though we still need it, I mean, let's be clear.
Because we were planning a certain levy cycle.
Right.
Yeah. So, I mean, yes, so now you almost feel like it's, some people may have said last week, how hard is it going to be for county auditors? So, you, there are districts that have a lot, a lot of millage that would be reduced. There were some examples of millage amounts that they weren't even effectively, they were at the twenty mil floor, but they would have to cut seventy-nine mils. So, not even possible. How?
And how do we explain it? It sounds like a foreign language.
How? It's a foreign language. And how can a county auditor, one year, reduce millage and how, their elected officials? How eager would they be to increase it? How eager would they be to take it down and then the cash balance situation changes and then they gotta raise it back up?
One of the things that we were told is that that might not happen, that once they take it, there is a possibility you won't get it back. So, because of that issue of the workload. So, we, that, that was, that is part of the concern, is that they bring us in line, then we drop below it and we don't get that money back, um, other than to go for another levy, which makes no sense.
Uh-uh.
You know, the voters had already voted for the money, it, it makes no sense, but that is a concern.
Well, not only that, but if I'm an auditor and you're telling me that you need some money from me.
Exactly.
And I need to audit you to make sure that you're telling me the truth.
Really need the money, right. So, there, there is that question that you won't get the money back.
Correct.
Which is also a concern.
So, one of the little pieces of, hmm, maybe good news, we're not so sure, the Treasurers' are still on the fence on this. We think we know why. They're thinking about instead of a five-year forecast, it being a three-year forecast. So, you know, the, the negative folks say they want that because a lot of districts four and five year looks bad. So, we look rich for three years, but we look really poor in years four and five. So, they want that year four and five doesn't fit the story that schools are all hoarding money and really rich. It's just because their levy cycle is hitting that, just like us. So, you know, starting this, this fiscal year, we had forty-five billion. On our last year of our forecast, we have negative cash. I mean, that's, those are two totally different stories. So...
Well, thank you, we appreciate that update. And Mary, as you ascend to the throne of Ohio...
We'll blame you. We'll send you up there.
Please keep giving us your updates also.
Well, I was up there. They said, everyone in this room, tell every district you know and everybody you know start writing those letters. You got two weeks, start writing letters, because that is the only thing that could potentially help us here. Because if this goes through, is, as you've just heard, it's really chaos.
Yes.
On a big scale.
And, and when, if you speak to a legislator, I mean, they are very pro-choice and that is, I, I, I say that is fine and wonderful, but as they take more and more and more taxpayer dollars, they are taking more tax- But as they take more and more and more taxpayer dollars, they are taking more taxpayer dollars. We all pay Ohio State taxes. More and more of our Ohio State taxes are going to fund, um, non, vouchers and non-public schools that don't have to follow the same rules as us. So I know OSBA, and I know Bassett, and I know OASBO are saying, if they're taking more and more and more taxpayer dollars, that comes with greater responsibility. Which is an annual audit of your accounting books and district and policy and everything you do, proper public purchases. All those things we have to do. We have to prove by taking tests every year. We have to do sunshine law, public records requests. There's just so many things that we have to do because we take public taxpayer dollars.
And I think they did have that in one of the bills initially, and they sliced it out. They had it in there, they, they have some accountability.
Yeah.
They sliced it out, and that was my conversation with folks. As you said, not anti, go, go where you wanna go.
Right.
Yeah, you've got a choice.
But have the same criteria for everybody.
Especially if you're using public dollars. This is still public dollars, so.
Right.
Again, if you're going to use public dollars, then we all should be under the same rules and regulations. But that's not the story.
So what do we want people to say to their legislators?
Just everything she just said.
Yeah, everything she just-
That's fairly-
There is some-
Years five and six, years five and six of the fair school funding plan, fully funded, base cost updated. Those are our two, and this cash balance, no.
So we're telling them, don't vote on-
Just no to cash balance.
No to cash balance.
No negotiation on that, just no. There's absolute no to that.
So we were told that they might come back and say, well, what is a fair percentage? There's no fair percentage, because all school districts are different.
Yeah.
And all school boards and taxpayers have voted differently on how they're going to manage their property tax revenue.
You could go to an individual district if you had a concern. That was the other thing. So why did you put us all together like that? If there is a district out there that's, you're concerned with-
Go fix that district.
Go deal with that district, but don't penalize all of us, that, that it makes no sense.
Yeah, there are districts that, that have definite, they, they're, they're, they're saving money in their general fund for a specific purpose.
Exactly.
You know, they're saving it because they know they have a big textbook adoption coming up. They have a big, uh, school bus purchase plan. They have, they have plans for the reasons why they have that cash. It's called local control.
Right.
It's a lot, thank you.
Well, you had a very good explanation of the emergency in the Viking report. Did you write that?
They had a lot of help by, by us.
Everyone who helped.
Writer over here.
It was very well explained. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Superintendent's report?
Thank you. I will say, last week was assistant principals' week, so I wanna give them a shout out on camera. I know, um, I was assistant principal at Princeton, and I was in other places, and I know how hard they work and, uh, what, what they, what they do. So really appreciate all they do at the middle school and high school, our assistant principals. Um, testing season, as we were talking about a little bit, they talked about, we've talked about, is upon us. So our kids and our staffs are working very hard to do the best they can to make sure that, um, they score well and we do well. Spring sports is hot and heavy, kind of, Mr. Roberts, because it rains every day and every, excuse, every day I'm getting cancellations and reschedules. Now, we did have senior day with, um, track Saturday.
Yeah.
So we got a nice day Saturday. And it was, you know, sun was out, a little windy, but it was, I'll take that, because what we're gonna get here coming this week. But, um, if you can get out and watch our student athletes, baseball got their game in Saturday. So, uh, if you can get out and watch them, um, check social media and, and our websites and things to make sure we're still playing across the fields and all those different, the things are an issue. Coming up, starting this Thursday, and going through the remainder of the year, we have our years of service at our individual building. So Thursday will be at Stewart, um, that morning. So that's really always a good time to just honor those, uh, worked here five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty. We have, we have some people who've been here forty years. So, um, it's, it's really a good day just to go in and see them. It's really good to get in the buildings and just say thank you for all they do. So that's coming up. I mentioned, I mentioned earlier Wesley, who's our Eagle Scout, was one of the leads in the Music Man, Princeton Performing Arts. It will be next week, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, Wednesday, Thursday, no, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, at seven PM in Matthews. Um, you get tickets online or at the door. However, if you are sixty-two or older, we have Golden Viking cards, which we've been giving out when I was going to-
I'm excited.
You ready to give one? You might, you might get it anyway.
Where do I get the Golden?
Uh, we've been going out to Pancake Breakfast and things and giving those out, then a few other places. So if you need a Golden Viking card, you can come here to, uh, Princeton Administrative Center, and they'll get you one up front. If you can't get here, um, email me and I'll make sure somehow we'll get you one. So we wanna make sure you're able to, then those get you into anything at Princeton except for state tournaments. Those state tournaments, the state controls that, we don't control that. So it's always a good thing.
So let me get this straight, in case somebody at church asks me.
Okay.
If you're over the age of sixty-five.
I think it's sixty-two, actually.
Sixty-two! And you live in the Princeton School District, you can get this Golden Buckeye.
Go Viking.
Go to Viking. Did I say Buckeye?
I say that too, I say it too. I slip up on her.
I'm so sorry.
I slip up.
But anyway, you can get this card, and you can go to plays and sports events.
Plays, sports events, as long as it's not a state tournament.
See, that's the Princeton advantage right there.
So we, I get, we're at the Sharonville, um, was a lap two Saturdays ago, I believe it was, Pancake Breakfast, and gave out quite a few to some folks, hopefully they'll come out and check out our student athletes and our people acting and band and everything, if it costs. A lot of things don't cost, but if it does, that'll get you in.
That's wonderful.
You, you don't mind if I ask, uh, uh, our AD, Mr. Roberts, a question?
No, huh.
With the Golden Viking card, do we get a discounted concession? So when you have an overstock, when you have an overstock, come to the side door.
He want, he wants some popcorn. I want to, uh, say, uh, Mr. Jeff Martin, Princeton representative for the Hamilton County Education Foundation Teacher of the Year, Teacher of Excellence at Evendale. And then all the other classified and certified teachers in individual buildings that got awarded. I believe in May we'll have them come up and we'll, we'll, uh, call them up and give them a certificate and honor them as well. It was kinda neat seeing Jeff, as, as, as I put out on social media, we, my first year in Princeton at Lincoln Heights in oh-three, we taught together. So we go back a long way. And even when I wasn't here, we would talk a lot when I'd see him at games. He does the change for football and different things. So it was really good to see, I think he's thirty-six years, I believe we said, teaching. So being recognized after thirty-six years for always done for kids is pretty awesome. And then congratulations to Lincoln Heights and Glendale Elementary Schools being named Hall of Fame schools. I will say, I was at Lincoln Heights in the morning and answered some questions, yeah, go ahead. I was at Lincoln Heights that morning and answered some questions, and I got to go a little bit with the kids, but I had to, had to go to another meeting. Um, but I got, when I was at Glendale in the afternoon, I was talking to the, uh, folks there. So what that, what happens with that is, you have to fill out a form, but then also they come and look at your school. And when I was at Glendale, these young folks that showed those, um, people around were unbelievable. To the, to the fact that they looked at us, Mr. Walker and me, said, they don't need you all, they got it. That's how great they were. Um, so I was very, very proud of them. I actually wrote them a little note and mailed it to their house, I was so proud of the way they did it, represented us. It was unbelievable. So I kinda, I kinda felt really good about both schools, because I saw what was going on, but you never know. So very proud of them and all their hard work and, uh, the principals and everybody did a great job. So congratulations to staff, kids, administration in those buildings. I do wanna give a shout out to the Princeton Athletic Boosters. They did give a thousand dollar support, uh, our DECA, now, DECA going to national competition.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
So that was awesome. Mr. Roberts, uh, the Athletic Boosters, they're going April twenty-sixth through the thirtieth to Orlando. And then the last thing I had here was our Cyber Vikes are going to the state. You may have seen that on social media as well. They'll be at Akron April twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. I know, right, she's a big part of that. I think your son started that, correct?
Yeah.
So her son started that, so, um, pretty, pretty good stuff. And, and that's, that's the Princeton advantage, that we have all these things that kids can be a part of. Everybody doesn't wanna shoot a basketball. Everybody can't sing. They can be a Cyber Viking, they can be in DECA. Those are all the things that Princeton has that a lot of places don't. And I wanna make sure everybody in the community understands, those are special to Princeton, and we wanna keep those going, so. And then the last thing, you mentioned the Viking report, it was probably in your mailbox last week. I got mine last week.
Yeah, I got one.
And, um, a lot of great things in here, so please look at our strategic plan, a lot of stuff, as Ms. Ruffin Moore said, with our, with our, um, money and things of that nature, that Ms. Chris and everybody did. Lot of information about the district facts. Mr. Simons got a little letter in here saying a few things. So we got a lot of, a lot of stuff. We heard loud and clear at our listening sessions that quite a few of our community members do not check our website or check, don't get our emails, or don't get on Facebook or Instagram, don't get our calls. So we're gonna, we're gonna commit to trying to get more mailers out. There's a, you know, we're trying to be cost effective, but I think it's worth it to get some of these out a few, couple times a year so our community members know what's going on, that don't follow us on social media things. You know, maybe I was kinda naive, because I'm a big social media person, so I see everything ever on social media. I don't read like this, but everybody's not like me. And we gotta make sure that we're catering to all our community. So we're gonna try to get more of these types of things out to let our folks know what's going on.
That's good.
That's all I have, sir.
And I will say, Walter and I went to the event that's celebrating the two schools. And, um, everybody from those two staffs was just thrilled that they won that honor. And I even got a thank you note from Dawn Bailey's mother. We talked together, but anyway, no, it was, it was very, very nice to go.
And I must say, I really enjoyed the pancakes at the Sharonville Kiwanis event.
They were good.
Saw Miss Hill there, and saw a few other folks there, it was just a great event.
And I did forget, we had just had the Future Ready Fair last week, which was pretty awesome as well. We had a lot of folks showing there, alumni. One, one young man was with, uh, Metrow Now, and he was a twelve grad, I believe. And he said, you used to be a principal, you know, he recognized me. I said, well, for a little bit of your high school career, I was here for a little bit. So just good seeing everybody. The Viking was there, the little kids loved it, a lot of opportunities. So that was really a neat, a neat event as well we had last week. So thank you to everybody, our custodians who did all that. Thank you to all the people that took part.
Do we have a mascot of the baby bike?
No, I don't believe so.
Oh, okay, that's curious.
A what?
A mask, you know how the Viking, he, he's carrying the, the, he looks like a Viking, and, and the baby bike is little.
It's a little one, yeah.
I'm just curious.
Every child is born within the Princeton district is a baby bike.
There you go.
We just need to take some pictures of it.
Oh, that's not what I want, I'm looking for a mask.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, we're at, uh, number eight, the executive session. And I'm gonna read this out loud, and then I'll need a motion. We're gonna discuss under sections one to one, point two-two, G one, to consider employment and compensation of a public employee. We're also gonna cover, uh, item six, details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for a public body or public office. And number eight, to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business plans, product techniques, with, occurring within our district. Can I have a motion to go to executive session?
I move to go into the executive session.
Second.
Okay. Properly moved and seconded. Mrs. Perd.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
We are moving to executive session. There will be one bit of district business after executive session. Thank you. Executive session, and we have, uh, item number nine, district business. Approval of a service agreement with Butler County ESC for interim administrator. For the tune of twenty-four hundred dollars. Uh, need a motion to approve that.
So move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Mrs. Perd, please call and roll.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Number ten is for adjournment. Need a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is properly seconded to adjourn. Mrs. Perd?
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
We are officially adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.